Clerk Paul, can we call the council meetings order, please?
Lennon?
Here.
Wayward?
Here.
Laysa?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon? Ruiz? Aronella?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Motion to excuse Ruiz.
Second.
Motion by Pabon, second by Faith to excuse Ruiz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. If we can all rise, I'm sorry. They have to make the motion to allow.
To allow Mary Beth to participate remotely.
I make a motion to allow Alderman Aronella to participate on the phone.
Second.
Motion by Laysa, second by Pabon, to allow Alderman Aronella to participate on phone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing.
The Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers all the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. Before we conduct the open forum, I'd ask for a motion for our distinguished guest.
I'd like to make a motion to bring forward F four for Redvenovsky.
Second.
Motion to bring forward F four by Laysa, second by Lennon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. F four, uh, clerk?
F four is a communication from the mayor. It's a proclamation recognizing the artistic accomplishments of Sandra Radvenovsky. Whereas Sandra Radvenovsky is a world-renowned soprano who was born in Berwyn, Illinois on April 11th, 1969, and lived with her family first on Thirty-Fifth Street and later on Maple Avenue, which she remembers as a lovely area. And whereas she has fond memories of living in the Berwyn area, including going to the Czech bakeries on Sirmack Road with her grandmother and enjoying the wonderful pastries and treats found there. And whereas she proudly claims her Czech heritage, saying, "I lived among many Czech people. I learned so much about my culture and country that all my family came from. Those lessons were invaluable." And whereas her early involvement in school and church choirs led her pursuing vocal lessons after her music director at church said she had a God-given talent with her voice. And whereas she credits her Berwyn roots with making her very solid, making her a very solid person with good morals and work ethic, in a 2020 interview from the Berwyn Historical Society's newsletter Past Times, she said, "I was taught to work hard to succeed because everyone else around us did the same thing in Berwyn, Cicero, and one always learns by imitation." And whereas Sandra Radvenovsky has gone on to an amazing career in opera, singing frequently at the Lyric Opera in Chicago, the Metropolitan Opera in New York, and in many famous venues in Europe, she has made several CD recordings and was also featured in a DVD recording alongside renowned tenor Placido Domingo. And whereas she has frequently acknowledged that she is a proud Berwyn native. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert J. Lovero, and the Alderman of the City of Berwyn, wish to congratulate Sandra Radvenovsky on her amazing operatic career and say that we are proud to claim her as one of our very own and to let her know that the welcome-home mat is always ready for her return visit to Berwyn. Dated this eighth day of April 2025, Mayor Robert J. Lovero, Margaret Paul Clerk, and the City Council of the City of Berwyn.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the message of this proclamation for Ms. Radvenovsky as informational.
Motion by Laysa, second by Pabon, to consider the proclamation as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Sandra, could you be escorted by David Olson, please? We're gonna ask the president, happy birthday for Sandra before she has to leave. So, also happy birthday. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sandra. Happy birthday to you.
I know you all don't know what I do. I'm an opera singer. And thank you. That was the best happy birthday I've ever had. Truly, no, but I was born here in Berwyn, and you don't know how special this is to me because the last four years of my life have been very difficult. And I lived away from Illinois and out of the United States for a long time, and I've just moved back to Chicagoland. So, the time could not be any better. And this is the first time I've been back in Berwyn in quite a while, and I love it even more. So, thank you all.
I should go in from London today. Okay, those who wish to speak at Oxford Forum, please step forward to the mic. State your name, please.
Michael Solway, First Ward resident, starting my twentieth year in Berwyn. I think it's probably been a while for a lot of people in this room who've been in a civics class. I know it's been close to fifty years for me.
Can you make sure that your microphone is on the green light?
There we go.
Again, it's probably been a while since anybody's sat in a civics class, and here we are in really dangerous times where speech and democracy is under attack. But we had some civic leaders 249 years ago, and they wrote this. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people to assemble peaceably and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Apparently, our city government doesn't like us to redress our grievances. But that's our right. This is a right. This is not a privilege. This is not a gift from the government. This is our right. And you are our public servants. Grievances, whether you call them disruptions, insults, whatever you want to call them, they go with the territory. If you can't take it, don't run for office. We have an opportunity tonight for some of the outgoing alders to do the right thing, to protect the freedom, to protect speech for your neighbors. You live in this community with us. And we ask you all, when the vote comes, to do the right thing and to vote against this measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leti Garcia. I'm the new Berwyn Clerk-elect. I'd like to take this moment to voice my opinion on what most of the residents are here to speak about today, the proposed ordinance changes to the public comment section, but in a clerk perspective. In a couple of weeks, I get sworn in, and I will be sitting on the other side of this chamber. I won 4,071 votes from my community. That is the highest number of casted votes than any elected official in the last couple campaigns in several Berwyn races since about 2009. I state this because it is important that I follow through on what I campaigned on, that I am here to serve my community. I'm here to serve Berwyn, its residents, and their voices. I believe public meetings are for public voices. Telling our residents to sit quietly on the sidelines until council has voted without their voice or opinion is taking away their right to voice their concern on key issues that affect them. By residents not being able to say or do anything about what has been passed until after City Council has made their vote is a form of limiting free speech. While we can go back and forth on the technicalities of free speech, public comments, what entitles a public body, giving them a space at the end for comment, all the legal jargon does not justify that their voice for comments prior to voting is being taken away. Getting time comment section at the end of the meeting feels more like a venting than it is productive to a fair democracy. Let me tell everyone, this ordinance affects all of us. Are you a homeowner who's trying to repair, to do repairs? It affects you. A car owner or multiple car owner who parks on the streets in Berwyn, it affects you. A mom, dad who is concerned about safety issues, it affects you. A senior citizen who wants handicap parking or lawn pickup services. A veteran who has no Berwyn local post. A business owner, part of the LGBTQ Latino first-generation student communities, handicapped, disabled, sick, or just an introvert who cannot make it to the meeting? Are you a Berwyn resident? Then it affects you. These are just examples of topics that can be on the agenda that you will no longer be able to voice your opinion on. What is considered disruptive? What is considered not allowed? What are the meetings that have a room filled of officers? Would it always be like today? I will end with this. Rush decisions and actions lead to frustration on all parties. Whatever is decided on, I, Leti Garcia, the Berwyn Clerk-elect, am committed to being the Admiral of transparency in Berwyn. I am the first Latina, the first nurse, the youngest woman is proudly who have won this office because my community put me here. My office will lead with ethical and transparent government and in new ways if needed, if that kind of free speech is limited here in Berwyn. I am committed to working with all parties regardless of affiliation or my personal beliefs to get that done. I am committed to making sure Berwyn feels heard on every topic that affects them. I am committed to serve my community, my people, and their voices, and if needed, the voice for them. I highly encourage free speech, and I urge you guys to vote no on it.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Matt Williams. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight, like many of my fellow residents, to voice my disapproval of the proposed amendment to council rules regarding public comment. This proposal is not indicative of what the residents of Berwyn want. Instead, it is yet another attempt by your administration to restrict resident voices and reduce the impact we can have on the council we elected. In your proposal, you listed five key benefits to this proposed change. I would like to address each one of those and offer counterpoint from a resident point of view. One, improved meeting flow. Placing public comment at the end of the meeting allows council to address time-sensitive matters on the agenda without delay. It ensures that important city business proceeds uninterrupted, promoting a more predictable and professional meeting environment. First, while I admit that I do not attend a lot of council meetings, I find it hard to believe that the City of Berwyn has any time-sensitive matters that would need to be addressed so quickly that you cannot wait until after public comment. With the average council meeting lasting less than an hour, what could possibly be so important that it cannot wait that long? Second, indicating that the change would ensure important city business proceeds uninterrupted tells me that you see our input and commentary as nothing more than an interruption to your agenda. How absolutely demeaning and insulting to the residents of Berwyn. Number two, enhanced transparency and accountability. Public comment at the conclusion of the meeting ensures that residents have an opportunity to share their thoughts on the broader community issues and topics not included on the meeting agenda, consistent with the purpose outlined in the amended orders. This helps maintain the focus of council deliberations on scheduled agenda items while still preserving an open avenue for civic participation in other relevant matters. Once again, you prioritize your agenda over the voices of your constituents. We can already address issues that are not on the agenda, and this proposal removes our ability to communicate directly with you and the other council members before voting on agenda items. The focus of council deliberations should be what the residents say about the agenda items. We know that as long as you hold a majority of the seats in the council, there won't be meaningful public deliberations. So, this is our last opportunity to have our voices heard before your agenda is rubber stamped. Three, clearer expectations for residents. By incorporating a sign-in sheet and establishing a consistent format for public comment, we can ensure all participants are treated equitably and that the meetings proceed in an orderly and respectful manner. The revised Rule Seven outlines appropriate decorum, limits on time, and procedures for participation that will foster constructive dialogue while maintaining decorum. I agree that there needs to be consistent standards for public comment. That includes ensuring all emailed statements are read and entered into the record. All residents who wish to speak are given the opportunity. All speakers, resident and council, must maintain decorum and refrain from ad hominem and defamatory remarks. Residents also need to be shown the respect they deserve and allowed to speak before any council votes take place. Council member focus. Beginning the meeting with legislative and administrative matters allows council members to be fully attentive and responsive to the city's business without the early distraction of public commentary, ensuring greater focus and deliberation. Doubling down on the residents' voices are a distraction sentiment feels very on-brand for this administration. This city's business is us, the residents. As I said before, the meetings are not lone. If council members are not able to maintain attention and focus because their constituents are voicing their commentary on proposed changes, then this body needs to reevaluate what it means to be an alderperson. Those unable to accomplish this requirement need to be educated on how to uphold the office, or they should be removed according to current statutory regulations. Number five, legal and procedural consistency. The amended language reflects current best practices observed in many municipalities and brings Berwyn public meeting structure into alignment with evolving standards in municipal governance. What municipalities are those? Are they ones we want to be emulating? Do the residents of those municipalities agree that they're best practices? Also, what are these evolving standards in municipal governments? Governance, how can we as residents find out more about these standards? And lastly, the fact that this proposal is coming up after the municipal elections and with several new council members joining soon, it is outright ridiculous. Not only are you stripping the residents of having their voices heard before votes, but you are also trying to ensure that the new council members have no say in this change. This is your last chance to get your agenda rubber stamped by council, and it's just another swing in a long line of trying to slap the vocal residents down. Council members, some of you have almost completed your terms, and this will be one of your last votes. Please vote for your constituents' rights and vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Rafael Padilla. I'm a First Ward resident. I'm not going to repeat what's already been said by the previous residents, but what I want to communicate is that this last election was a very tough election. I think we're seeing some changes that the residents want. The participation at this city council today shows that residents are, want their voices to be heard. Having an open forum before the council encourages citizen participation. Thank you, everybody, for participating, and it ensures that local citizens reflect the views and concerns of the community. By you putting this at the, putting open forum at the end of the council meeting, it's gonna prevent that, and it's gonna restrict our, you know, our comments on decisions that are gonna be made during the council meeting. So, that's all I really have to say. I have one last thing, and I just wanna, I know that Marge Paul is leaving soon, so I just want to thank her for her service. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Stephanie Nance, Seventh Ward resident. Not too long ago, I spoke for the first time in open forum about the Berwyn's welcoming ordinance. Sadly, that's not why I'm here tonight. Like y'all know why I'm here. But the very first thing I said that night was that I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be heard. But you should be thanking me. You should be thanking us because honestly, you represent us, the people of Berwyn. You were elected by the people. You should care what we want, about what we want, what your constituents want, before you vote on it. I'm just gonna do the same type of thing, pick apart what you said. You said you wanted improved meeting flow. I thought you had a point here, but when I looked at what you wrote, it had nothing to do with meeting flow. You made it sound like agenda items were so time-sensitive that they couldn't wait until after open forum. If they really can't, then make the meeting earlier. And then, and next point that you had was that you wanted to ensure important city business proceeds uninterrupted. I strongly disagree here. We conclude open forum before the rest of city business starts. Therefore, we're not currently interrupting it. But if our only option is to not speak until after, you're going to get more interruptions. Next, enhanced transparency and accountability. Everyone wants enhanced transparency and accountability. But what you said in this section has nothing to do with either. You talked about wanting to ensure that comments at the end give us opportunities to talk about what's not on the agenda. But we have the opportunity to talk about what's not on the agenda, even if it happens before. You also said that you wanted to keep focus. You have a whole section about focus. I'll talk about that later. But basically, the reason that you have this section with nothing about it is because what you're doing stands against transparency and accountability. Next, you want clearer expectations for residents. I'm pretty sure this proposal makes it very clear what you expect of your residents. You expect us to have no influence over the votes of our representatives. You expect us to shut up and take it when proposals go against our best interests. This isn't about decorum or respect. It's about stifling us, gagging us, silencing us. Oh, we can moan about it later after. Thank you, but no thank you. We deserve to be heard before. All right, council member focus. I think you should be embarrassed it's on here, honestly, and that it's a key benefit. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Are you saying that if you hear dissenting remarks, that you'll be swayed to vote in favor of everything that people want here? Are you saying that if you hear from us, you might have to weigh the pros and cons during your vote? Or are you just saying that you're not capable of keeping focus during the rest of the meeting if you hear us talk? Because that doesn't sound like you are really in a position to be making the decisions that are important to us. Lastly, legal and procedural consistency. Let me get this straight. Your last key benefit is that everyone else is doing it, so so should we. Did your mom ever say to you, "If little Scotty jumps off a bridge"? Did you? Because my mom did. She taught me that I should stand up for what's right, even if it's not popular. So, right now, at this time, where other governing bodies are taking away our rights, are taking away our people, in a climate where other governing bodies are bowing to oligarchs and they're touting the virtues of authoritarianism, your last key benefit is that we should be like them? That is disgraceful. You should be empowering your people. You should be giving us our voice at this pivotal time in history. You should be doing all you can to make sure our voices aren't stripped away from us, not silenced by us. I just want to take this time to remind the aldermen that are leaving for office, you know, that you're gonna have your voice heard too during open forum. Would you rather be heard before or after the people who replace you vote? I'll close by saying that we want you to vote no. That is what we want. We were telling you this before so that you know that you have the privilege and the opportunity to hear us tonight before you vote, and we want that in the future as well. So, thank you for hearing us, and maybe thank us for letting us speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jamie Franklin, and I'm a resident of the First Ward. I don't want to belabor any points because we've had some amazing speakers already, and they've made some extremely powerful points. But I just want to add a couple of things from my perspective as a lawyer. In the proposed revision to our, to this ordinance, the mayor has given himself the power to decide who will speak, to recognize who to speak, to cut off speakers, to consolidate speakers when he thinks they're going to speak on the same issue, and even to fine and arrest a speaker if he thinks they're being disruptive. The mayor, as chair, has complete power to regulate our speech under this proposed revision. And we know already that when, when an elected official in Berwyn has power to do things, they tend to use it. My concern is that this revision, and I don't care if everybody else is doing it, this revision could be vulnerable to legal challenges, and there are people prepared to bring those challenges. So, if you all want to vote for it, just think about how much money you're going to spend in defending those legal challenges. It's not a threat. It's a statement of fact. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council, you've already heard extremely articulate and very convincing voices explain to you that we do not want this. So, if you vote for it tonight, you're going on the record. Your vote will be on the record, and it will be open to scrutiny, whatever happens after that. So, I really urge everyone to think about the fact that all these people are here, many, the vast majority of these people are here, to tell you what they want. They want you to vote no. So, please do that. Please do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Taylor. I'm a Third Ward resident. I'd like to acknowledge that I've been speaking here for a long time, for many years, and it's not always been the case that members of council look at the speakers here. And to me, that's finally signaling the importance of public forum, open comment, that this is the opportunity to engage our elected officials to petition, one of the many ways we have here. It's very important to have it in the beginning of meetings. We also saw an example today of how agenda items could be brought forth early before public comment if there was a need to expedite something, which is all today. So, that's an example of why not to vote for this, that there are other avenues here, and it's important to many residents to have open forum at the beginning of meetings. I'm urging you to vote no to the agenda item F three, or refer to the Outreach Committee for the upcoming council term. As specified by the Berwyn Code of Ordinance, that committee has the authority to review procedures and ordinance related to open government. It is deeply concerning that this council is considering altering council procedures before addressing the longstanding issue of ethical government. For over two years, I have urged Mayor Lovero to enforce the ethics ordinance. A request has been consistently disregarded by him, the city attorney, and members of council. Prioritizing ethical conduct is essential before any procedural changes are implemented for council. I respectfully urge council to vote no, defer, or refer this agenda item, and instead focus on passing a resolution demanding Mayor Lovero's immediate enforcement and compliance with the ethics ordinance. That would be a more fitting priority for the council's final weeks. Your legacy would be best served by upholding rather than restricting the fundamental right to engage open government when it comes to matters that deeply affect our daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Wagner. I'm a Fourth Ward resident. I'd like to speak on something different about the public comment period other than what other people have spoken on tonight. One day in Berwyn, I hope we can have a council meeting where elected officials do not yell or argue back with residents during the public comment period. In my entire work experience, both in participating in public comment periods, in leading them, in note-taking for public comment periods, I've never seen what happens here in Berwyn. Officials should say at the most, "Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Leave your contact information if you'd like a response back." That's it. Mayor Lovero, you routinely argue back with folks during public Mayor Lovero, you routinely argue back with folks during public comment period. Public comment period is part of the Robert's Rules of Order. This is a parliamentary manual that was developed by Henry Robert in 1876. All government entities internationally follow Robert's Rules of Orders, and they have a portion of Robert's Rules of Order where they outline how public comment periods should be conducted. Should be conducted, you know, within the meeting, preferably in the beginning. I'm gonna give you a direct quote from Robert's Rules. "In general, it is best not to respond at all to public comment. However, the chair may provide brief factual information if appropriate. The chair must not, under any circumstance, enter into a back-and-forth exchanges with the public. Council members should also refrain from speaking during this portion of the meeting." So I just ask you, in your next four years, if you could not shout over people, if you could not argue back with them, just let the public comment period happen, say thank you, and move on.
Good evening, my name is Mina Kavon.
Can you tell us a little more?
Sorry, sorry.
There you go.
Good evening, my name is Mina Kavon, I'm resident of the 1st Ward, and I've been in Berwyn longer than many of you have ever been elected. I wish to declare my dissent to the changes to the open forum. I wish to begin with this point, the residents of Berwyn elected public servants funded by the public to serve the public. During the season where many people of faith observe a sacred time of reflection, it is my hope that this elected body would observe some humility on behalf of the residents that they serve, and in the spirit of my fellow citizens who marched with me and attended the Hands Off Valley this past Saturday, hands off the open forum. Thank you.
My name is Daniel, I live in South Berwyn. When I came before council last, I expressed my fear that as our national political and economic situation deteriorated, our local government would not have our backs. It appears my fears were justified. With so many aspects of our daily lives hanging on the edge of a knife, Mayor Lovero, you've decided now is the time to also try to curtail our free speech. We've covered all of the bits and pieces of this measure that make it atrocious. We've covered how saying that we're falling in line with what other neighborhoods, with what other neighboring towns and cities do, is not a good argument. And so, I wish to pose some questions for everybody in the room. Shouldn't we be proud that Berwyn offers its residents a voice? Shouldn't it be a brag for our leaders to say, "Yes, we listen to our constituents"?
Yes!
Shouldn't we be looking for ways to protect free speech?
Yes!
Shouldn't we be looking for ways to expand free speech?
Yes!
More democracy is always a good thing. To everyone in this room, we have an opportunity to build a legacy for ourselves and for our community of standing up for free speech. To all my residents here today, thank you for speaking, thank you for being here. You've taken that step. Council, if someone motions to pull this public comment measure from the agenda, pull it. And if this abomination of a measure goes up for a vote, vote it down.
Luis Chavez, 16th and Ridgeland. You know, I've been speaking up at open forum for many, 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 many years. And I remember the first time that I spoke up was, I think, in 2017, 2018, and it was because Chief Samaglia was trying to pass this ordinance to partner with a foundation for, so that foundation can serve as an animal shelter, because supposedly wagon tails was over capacity and needed to start partnering with a new shelter. I saw that item on the agenda, I saw who the partner was, who I had had negative experiences with, with my own pets doing animal rescue for a couple decades. And I saw that this foundation wasn't registered with the state, didn't have a license to serve as an animal shelter, and the ordinance that Chief Samaglia and that your lawyer, who still works for the city, were trying to pass, said that animals could be euthanized. I spoke up about it, as I usually do before, on social media, before a city council meeting. Animal advocates, rescue folks, animal lovers reached out and said, "Hey, Berwyn has an ordinance that you cannot euthanize animals." And if we hadn't had that connection and wouldn't have had the opportunity to speak up on that ordinance, that ordinance would have passed. The chief tried coming in, I know you probably don't remember, maybe one of the other seven family members you have on the city payroll can remind you, because there's eight total of you. He tried passing a new ordinance last minute. And I was glad that Jeannie and Jose were on board, and they actually asked a lot of questions, and then they came back, and I think it was tabled. But in the end, because of open forum, because somebody spoke out and community and members connected on this issue, you didn't pass an ordinance that was gonna kill animals that was against an ordinance you all had already passed. Another issue I had talked about was the importance of getting Spanish translation, because 65% of Berwyn is Latino. Over 50% of households speak a language other than English. And I spoke up and said, "Why is social media, why is the website, why are so many forums only in English? There should be a comprehensive bilingual communications plan." Now, if you remember, that was 2019, probably August, September, and I had livestreamed it, like I'm doing now, and you shut me down. You shut me down when I was giving data, when I was giving suggestions, you shut down the conversation. The next day, Chuy Garcia happened to have a town hall here, and an award-winning journalist named Jackie Serato came, and she asked Garcia, "What do you think about Mayor Lovero shutting down the resident yesterday that tried to get more bilingual communication in such a Latino community?" And he said two things, he said, "One, I didn't know about that," and he said, "That shouldn't have happened, I wish I would have known about that before, speaking to Lovero." And he talked about the importance of organizing, which I need everybody to give each other a hand right now, because this is organizing. And this is what Chuy Garcia was telling us to do. This didn't happen because of some organization, this was all word-of-mouth, neighbor-to-neighbor, because in Berwyn, we have each other's back. But in Berwyn, we have each other's back. And then, Chuy Garcia spoke about how important it is for communications to be bilingual. He spoke about the importance of language justice, accessibility. Two months after that, low and behold, Berwyn started making all their social media communications in Spanish and English, and started to translate more of their documents, and updated their website, so there was a Spanish feature. Again, because folks spoke up, that change happened. There have been a million other examples, and you know that every time, you and I know, y'all know that usually, there's only about five people here, ever. But when there's an issue that's really important to our community, our community shows up. And it's not gonna matter if they show up at the end, when you all have already voted. I want to know, after so many years of seeing you in that chair, winning election after election, why are you so scared of your own constituents? Why are you so scared of somebody speaking up at a podium on a mic? Like, seriously, what frightens you? Even somebody overheard you at the last meeting, say, "Oh, I survived that one, we'll see." Come on, man, like, seriously. You're, you know, like Prince says, "Act your age, not your shoe size." So please, you all, why would have your legacy of giving people free speech? Lennon, I sued you because you blocked my free speech, you blocked me on Facebook, you cost this city $100,000 because you did not want to settle right away. All I got was $1. The rest went to lawyers, because you did not want to settle right away. You can change that by voting in favor of free speech tonight. So please, LaJia, you're gonna be around still another four years. Please, LaJia. Look at people in the face, be able to look at people in the face and say that you protected their free speech. Same thing with you, Richard Bob Fait.
Hi, good evening, Alex McKinley, 3rd Ward resident. My wife and I, earlier today, already composed a long message to our alderman, Alderman LaJia. Congratulations on your reelection, by the way, Richard, I do think you are a good alderman. So I will spare you all the details, all the point-by-point rebuttals that we wrote out for Alderman LaJia, and I just want to humanize this for you all for a second. Tuesdays, I get home late from work, still in my work clothes, so at 7:30 this evening, I was sitting on my living room floor with my three-year-old son, he's still already in his PJs, we're playing with wooden briot trains, a lot of fun, and he asked me to read him a bedtime story. And I said, "I'm sorry, Richie, I can't tonight, Mom's gonna have to do it, because apparently I have to go to city council and speak out in favor of free speech," which is not something I thought I would ever have to do in Berwyn, I've lived here my whole life. I tell you this story because I understand that time is precious, very, very precious. And I know that you want to have more efficient meetings, but this is not the way to do it. Now more than ever, this is not the way to do it. So I will sincerely ask you to either withdraw this proposed ordinance or vote no on it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Barr, I live in the 3rd Ward. I just wanted to say a few things on my mind, the whole concept of this enrages me. This is how I look when I'm enraged. I personally would consider a recall vote as opposed to challenging this in court if it passes. But the other point I would like to make is that, where are all the residents that are in favor of this proposal?
Hello, my name's Elizabeth, I'm a 3rd Ward resident. I've never spoken at anything like this before, so that means, I guess it's a pretty big deal for me to come up and talk in front of everybody. What I wanted to point out, which one of my fellow residents helped me realize, is you have a council member participating remotely right now, but you don't want to allow us to do that. If we can't email our comments, if we can't do anything like that, if we have to show up in person at the designated time in order to get our voices heard, how are you going to allow that, allow this, but not allow that? One day, you all will not be on the council anymore, one day you may not be mayor anymore, and you will be here, and you will be wondering, "How do I get my voice heard when I'm on this side of the council chambers?" So I ask you to vote, not like a council member, not like a mayor, I want you to act like a resident of the town who would need this ordinance to be taken off the agenda or to be voted down. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody on the council, the mayor, and for all the residents that are here. I'm a newer resident, I'm in the 3rd Ward, and my grandmother grew up in Cicero, and coming to Berwyn was like coming home again. I had grandparents that lived in Brookfield, so this part of the Chicagoland area is just home to me. And one of the things I love about Berwyn in today's age is when you look around this room, seeing the amazing amount of diversity and the voices that we're hearing tonight. And I have to point out that nobody speaking is speaking in favor of this proposal. And I understand that most council meetings, there's probably proposals that people don't feel a lot of energy behind, and they decide it's more important to stay home with their child. But this room is full of people that decided to take time on their lives to say that this is not what Berwyn wants. So I hope and I urge all of you to vote no or to table, because this is not what Berwyn wants. Thank you.
Thank you.
If the residents of Berwyn will indulge me for a moment here, I'd like to exercise the 15 minutes that I have to speak a little bit on... No, no, 15, no, fine, no. Apologies, my bad, my bad. So, if you will indulge me to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about the efforts of our lovely town of Berwyn to exercise a change that is similar to one of Cicero. Now, tonight I speak as a former resident of the 1st Ward, but I will gladly take a moment to proudly say I'm a resident of Cicero, and here's why I say proudly. I ask you, in solidarity with the people here in Berwyn, to genuinely say this sincerely, do not be like Cicero. Cicero itself has their minutes, they allow public comment at the end of meetings, and I can tell you firsthand, it's not great. Taking time to listen in all the different decisions that could have been addressed in the beginning of the meeting, allowing people to take that time to really voice their concerns before matters are voted on, it's important, it matters, it's very, very meaningful to hear what your constituents, what people here have to say before decisions that directly, or perhaps indirectly, affect them. I stand here telling you that in Cicero, it is not great to have leadership that tries to undermine the voices and opinions of a lot of different residents. Not many people take the time to really speak out, take time to really address the concerns that they have, because they feel like their voices don't really matter. I look at this room tonight, I genuinely am so happy and so proud to see so many people come here and speak out. It's a beautiful thing. I would pray to see the type of outspoken leadership from a lot of different residents that want to talk to you, to talk to the aldermen, to talk to the matters that are important to them, taking the time to maybe, just maybe, in the hope that possibly, that there is a chance that something comes up that brings a lot of attention, a lot of concern, that maybe something could be brought onto the agenda, if possible. And maybe, at the very least, maybe take an opportunity to speak passionately to the aldermen, to give them an opportunity to listen to reason, to listen to concerns, to listen to the voices of the people that they are representing, to do the right thing for their ward. I stand here telling you to your face right now, because I've been paying attention, I follow a lot of different things that happen in Berwyn, and I say this, and I say it passionately because I contribute to Berwyn, I pay, help, I support the economy here in Berwyn, I have educated youth in the public schools, in District 98, I have supported the youth in private schools, like in St. Leonard's. I genuinely can say that despite not me being here, I am a proud Berwyn resident. I feel a Berwyn, I'm a Berwyn resident at heart, and I will always be here and support Berwyn and its people. And I can honestly tell you to your face right now, that you have campaigned during your mayorship, that you did not want to see Chicago leadership, or people trying to run and try to bring all these different ideas about, you know, a lot of different changes, or like bringing all that Chicago politics into Berwyn. A strong community is Berwyn, how it is right now. Strong Berwyn, a strong Berwyn is what's in this room right now. A strong Berwyn is allowing people the opportune time to let them speak publicly in the forum, the way how it is right now. You do not want to be like every other place, every other spot. You do not want to be like every other place, every other spot. Certainly, and I say, and I can say this without regret, you do not want to be Cicero, not by any means. I encourage you, genuinely, to really consider all the voices that are being said here. And Mr. Lennon, if I may, I do, despite, despite what anyone here says, despite anything that, like, people can disagree or agree with everything I'm saying right now, but I will say this, because your, your time here is about up nearly, I would encourage you, as a former 1st Ward resident, to please vote no on this matter. You have, you have done a considerable job of maintaining and supporting 1st Ward, and I thank you for that. And I think your final vote coming up soon should be no on this decision. Thank you.
My name is Rwanda Mejia. I'm a resident of the 5th Ward. I'm not gonna underscore everything that everybody has said. I, I hope that the message is clear. I wanted to mention a couple of things. Like others have said, you know, I too work. I am here with my son. I've been here in my uniforms, my hospital scrubs before, speaking here. I think the last time I spoke here was against voter intimidation by an associate known to Mr. Lennon and yourself, too. That was Mr. Robert Maldonado, in case you don't remember. But I wanted, I wanted to mention a couple of things. One, I wanted to ask if there could be more police patrol on Highland. There's constantly cars driving north on Highland, which is a one-way street facing, going south. It's constant. I don't know if it's people trying to get to the laundromat, but I was nearly in two accidents in the same week from people driving in the opposite direction. This also happens on, is it 18th or 19th, where the studio is, where the pool, where the old pool used to be? All the time, there's cars driving in the opposite direction as well. I also wanted to mention the ineffective people you have in your departments, which I'm sure you know about, because many people have mentioned this before, but whenever I need services, I reach out to the appropriate department, not my Alderman, and I leave messages. I leave, I send emails. I never get a response back, ever. The job somehow ends up getting done after repeated calls and messages and blah, blah, blah. But why do you, why do you have these people working in these departments if they're not gonna pick up the phone and just say, "Hey, I got your message, we'll take care of it," at the very minimum? My taxes pay their salary, I think, so, I mean, that's the least that they could do. Second, the rat issue, you know, the warmer weather's coming. I was one of the residents that, in my yard, in my paved pavers, the rats were digging through the pavers. We don't have any dog feces in our yard. We try to keep the yard as best as we can. There's no overgrowth on there. The gentleman from the rat company, Awesome, he's very nice, but you know it's just him and his wife and like one other person that helps. That's the only staff he has. It's not enough to help all of the residents in Berwyn. Third thing that I wanted to mention was, if you want to control speech, you need to control these people right here who constantly interrupt while residents are up here trying to express their concerns. This is at every meeting that I've been to, and I'm sure it's at every meeting that anybody speaks here against anything that they believe in. That is annoying, disrespectful, childish. That needs to have a stop right there. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Tina Robertson. I'm on the, I live in the 7th Ward, and I lived in Berwyn about six years now. I never really attended city council meetings before, I'll be honest, before the November election this last year, because it kind of made me want to get more engaged and involved in local politics. And it honestly made me feel really great to come here and see people speak and see people be engaged, and I got to know some other people that way. I've gotten to be able to feel like I'm able to help more at the local level. And I was able to do that because I saw people who were maybe sometimes frustrated, but at least they were passionate and they really care about where they live. Me and my husband lived here, we moved here six years ago. We kind of just picked it because it was in between Chicago and the suburb I was working, so it made sense to move here. It was a starter home. We thought, hey, you know, at some point, we're gonna move. And when we talked about moving recently, it was like, I don't want to move outside of Berwyn even. You know, even if we do upgrade to a different home, I want to stay in Berwyn because I like the people here. I like seeing people engaged. And the idea that right now, with everything going on, this is what you are prioritizing, is making people feel less heard, that's just, it's very, very upsetting. And I think you can tell that because there's a lot of upset people here. So, please, vote no. Just either take it off the agenda or please vote no, because honestly, why would you try to stifle voices right now of all times?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let this young lady speak, but just so you're aware, I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot tonight. I'm gonna rework it and see what I can do to make it better. But you, please, young lady, please say what you have to say.
My name is Emma. I would like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to see my community in action, because it's just like really fun. I never really get to like see these things, and like, just like seeing this stuff in person, it excites, it, it makes me happy, and I get to learn more things. That's all I'm gonna say today.
Thank you. With that being said, I'm gonna pull F3 from the agenda for this evening, so there will be no vote on it. I will do my best to rework it so that it involves the concerns of what we've heard tonight, but we do have to, you have to understand, we do have to put some restrictions in because we do have to control this open forum. So, I will rework it, and we'll bring it again forward later, but I will rework it, okay? But I will pull it for tonight. Young lady, did you want to speak? Go ahead. Yeah, you could speak, young lady. Go ahead.
Hello, I am Eileen Burns. So, I'm a resident of Berwyn, and I do, I am very glad that we are, that we're at least setting the hard restrictions aside, because I do not believe that it's fair. We should be free to speak what's on our minds, what we think is good for our homes, for my community and everybody else's.
Thank you very much. Yeah, lower the mic for her.
Hi, I'm Julia Burns, and I, I don't really do this, and this is my first time doing this, basically, and...
She loves her train of thoughts.
Thank you.
But she's happy that, that it's got taken off the table.
Madam Clerk, item C1, please.
Mayor, just before we get started, can I just say one thing? Can I make a suggestion that when you do rework the ordinance, that it gets brought to Cow, so that we can have a discussion about it?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C1, please.
May I speak?
Hello?
Mayor, Council, Cook County Commissioner Frank Aguilar, 16th District. I want to congratulate the new electives and the new electeds coming in for the next. I'd like to, I look forward to working each and every one of yous. You know, I've been in a lot of council meetings, city halls, and this is the most largest attendees I have ever seen. Each and every single resident here for coming, we need to hear from you. You know, you're, really, I'm glad to see you. It gives me energy that, you know, we have council meetings and the county board, we, you know, we limit it to two minutes. You know, we don't really restrict it, but we have it in the beginning first before we start sessions. So, can congratulate every single one of yous. I was gonna leave after this, but I'm gonna stick around, because I'd like to meet all the yous. Okay. And I need to hear from you, you know. You gotta tell me what you want. I'm trying. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for drawing the, the item there. But just a quick report, and I have a resolution here that I'd like to present to you as well, and for your son. I've put on 700, over $750,000 for residential flooding management program aimed to reducing residential structure flooding combined with sewerage backup. That's one of my biggest priorities, is flooding. And we got hit a year and a half ago with this huge storm that affected mostly Cicero, but it hit a lot of parts time of Berwyn. In the Community Development Emergency Resolution Grant, we had over $1,679,022 grants. Violent Prevention Victims Supported, we supported over $5 million in $756,337 grants. And for small businesses, we've given $3.4 million, 189 grants. I like partner up with property taxes events, and I'm gonna do one with your, with your assessor, Jacqueline Parida. She's very active. She's probably one of the most active assessors in, in the district. I'm really glad to see that, you know, really, it's something else. I've opened up a state-of-the-art office in Lightington Township from the north end of my, my district. I sponsored an amendment, and we're still working on it for the paid timely affordance that exclude park districts, the schools. I've partnered very much with the Sheriff's Department for safety, to continue the safety, safety training, carjacking prevention seminars, car safety, repairing headlights, and information initiatives that the sheriffs, sheriffs have. Partner up with Illinois Manufacturing, Illinois Manufacturing Excellence Centers for the Bureau of Economic Development and bringing manufacturers grants to suburban Cook. I've brought over $3 million to 16th District for gun prevention reduction grants. Inroads, youth inroads got received, I think $1.5 million in that grant, and they're continuing to work against gun violence. I'm the lead sponsor for initiative of bringing a helicopter to Cook County Sheriff's Office to combat, combat carjacking and assist the general public and assist your law enforcement and safety. You know, we are the second-largest county in the country, and we never had a helicopter. You know, LA is the largest, and they got over 20 helicopters, and helicopters have proven to be the most effective ways to go against carjacking, so I'm very proud. It's gonna be unveiled sometime in June. It's the state-of-the-art helicopter. It has night vision and quick to respond against any crime, and it's also used for rescues. I brought, brought the climate funding to the form grants in the 16th District Municipalities to improve climate resili- relentlessly, including addressing flooding. Much more grants are available, and, you know, it's gonna be a rough four years with this new administration in Washington. We're gonna try as much as stretch, stretching dollars, and hopefully, our budget funds will not be limited. So, we gotta work on that as well. Mayor, I have a resolution. I received many, many phone calls on your son.
Yeah, Frank, I know, I know the county passed a resolution for my son.
Yes.
I would prefer that, that stay with you and me. I'd rather not relive that here, so if we can possibly be happy to get that from you later, but I thank you so much for your efforts in that, yeah.
Yeah, well, the public called me up, and the, you know, when the public calls me, I received many, many, many phone calls. Your son was a very loved individual, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, I'm gonna stick around and say hi to you. I brought plenty of business cards.
Item C1, Madam Clerk, please.
Item C1, are the committee of the hall and regular meeting minutes of March 25, 2025?
I'll make the motion to approve the committee of the hall and regular city council meeting minutes of March 25.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Roywood, to approve the committee of the hall and regular council meetings of March 25. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E1, please.
E1 is a communication from the Berwyn Development Corporation asking for street closure and other city services for the Berwyn Shops grand opening.
It would be my motion to approve this request from the BDC to close Clayton Avenue Roosevelt Road for the Berwyn Shops grand opening on Friday, May 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to...
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, seconded by Babone, to grant the BDC's request about closing the street for the Berwyn Shops grand opening on May 2nd, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, opposed? The ayes have it. Item E2, please.
Item E2 is a communication from the Berwyn Development Corporation submitting the third and fourth quarter vacancy report.
A motion to consider it informational.
I'll make a motion to accept this vacancy report as informational.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Carmichael, to consider the communication as informational, and thank the BDC for their vacancy report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E3, please.
Item E3 is a communication from the Berwyn Development Corporation submitting the first quarterly report for 2025.
I'll make the motion to accept the BDC quarterly report as informational.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Carmichael, to accept the quarterly report of 2025 as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F1, please.
Item F1 is a communication from the mayor submitting the appointment of Aaron M. Dunphy to the Auxiliary Review Board.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's recommendation to appoint Aaron M. Dunphy to the Auxiliary Review Board to complete the three-year term expiring on April 25, 2025, and take the oath of office.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, seconded by Lennon, to concur with the appointment of Aaron Dunphy to the Auxiliary Review Board to fill the outstanding term. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Aaron, would you come up, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Aaron M. Dunphy, having been appointed to the Auxiliary Review Board in the city of Berwyn, in the county of Cook, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, support the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and faithfully discharge the duties of an Auxiliary Board member according to the best of your abilities? Thank you. Congratulations.
Item F2, please.
Item F2 is a communication from the mayor with an ordinance reading, an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax for the city of Berwyn, county of Cook, state of Illinois.
I'll make that motion to approve the ordinance, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Fate, to approve the ordinance, fix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor, and call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
LaJia?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Babone?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item G1, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor. Hold on just a second. Item G1 is a communication from the clerk requesting permission to destroy audio recordings of closed sessions.
It would be my motion to concur with Clerk Paul and destroy the closed committee recordings and sessions.
Second.
Motion by Fate, seconded by Lennon, to concur with Clerk Paul and allow the destruction or erasing of the particular closed session recordings as listed in the communication. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item G2, please.
Item G2 is a communication from the clerk with staff recommendations regarding four requests for handicap parking.
It would be my move to concur with the clerk's office for the denial of the following zones and parking, handicap parking spaces. 6444 West 28th Street, which is a zone. 1225 South Euclid, which is a space. 2703 Euclid Avenue, which is a space. And 3535 South Harvey Avenue is a zone.
Second.
Motion by Babone, seconded by Carmichael, to concur with Clerk Paul's decision to deny the request for spaces and/or zones at the locations as listed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I1, please.
Item I1 is a communication from the Fire and Police Commission with the introduction and swearing-in of Jonathan Sandoval.
I move that we accept this communication from the Berwyn Fire and Police Commission certifying... certifying that Jon, Jonathan Sandoval is the next eligible candidate on their eligibility list with an effective start date of 4/9/2025 as informational and have him take the oath of office.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Roywood to accept the communication from the Berwyn Police and Fire Commission at the appointment of Jonathan Sandoval. Let him take the, uh, swear the oath of office beginning February, excuse me, April 9, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jonathan?
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Jonathan Sandoval, having been appointed to the rank of probationary police officer in the city of Berwyn and the county of Cook, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and support the Constitution of the state of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a, excuse me, faithfully discharge the duties of a probationary police officer according to the best of your abilities? Thank you so much.
And Jonathan's family, come on up, want to take a picture with them? Congratulations, Jonathan. Item I two, please.
Item I two is a communication from the Fire and Police Commission introducing Stephen Ariz, Ariz, I'm sorry, Stephen, Stephen Ariza is, uh, and to be sworn in as a probationary police officer.
I move that we accept this communication from the Berwyn Fire and Police Commission certifying that Stephen Reiza is the next eligible candidate on their eligibility list with the effective start date of 4/9/2025 as informational and have him take the oath of office.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Roywood to concur with the Police and Fire Commission, consider the communication informational and congratulate Stephen and him sworn in taking the oath of office and beginning 4/9/2025 as probationary police officer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Stephen?
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Stephen Ariza, having been appointed to the rank of probationary police officer in the city of Berwyn and the county of Cook, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer according to the best of your abilities?
Aye.
Stephen's family? Want to come up, take a picture with him? That's okay. Congratulations to both Jonathan and Stephen. Item J one, please.
Item J one is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca with an amendment of an ordinance reading, an ordinance amending chapter 620, section 620.20 through 620.29 of the codified ordinances regarding welcoming city regulations for the city of Berwyn, county of Cook, state of Illinois.
Is my motion that we adopt the amendment to ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 620, section, section 620.20 through 622.9, I mean 29, of the codified ordinance regarding welcome city regulations for the city of Cook, uh, county of Cook, state of Illinois. Direct the corporate authorities to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage and thank all of the community members who made this possible, including Stephanie Nance, for all their work on this amendment.
Second.
Motion by Babone, second by Carmichael to adopt the ordinance amending the welcoming city ordinance of the city of Berwyn, fix the necessary signatures, place on its way to passage and thank the community members that helped change this ordinance. All those in favor, then call the roll.
Aye.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
LaJia?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Babone?
Aye.
Aaronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J two, please.
Item J two is a communication from Fire Chief Caniglio recommending purchase of a Pierce Saber Fire Engine Pumper.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief Caniglio and authorize the agreement with HGAC to purchase a new Pierce Saber Fire Engine Pumper with financing through PNC, equipment finance in the amount of $958,751, which will be financed over seven years at a 4.7% rate, bringing the total cost to $1,149,352.05. This expenditure will be included in the fire department budget and has been reviewed by the finance director, Monica Martin.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Babone. Fire Chief, uh, Caniglio, allow the purchase of the Pierce Saber Fire Engine Pumper for the total cost of 1.149,352.05 as financed over the seven years. All those in favor, then call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
LaJia?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Babone?
Aye.
Aaronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item J three, please.
J three is a communication from Chief Caniglio requesting authorization to contact the Police and Fire Commission for the next three eligible probationary firefighter paramedics.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief Caniglio's request to contact the Fire and Police Commission to hire the next three qualified candidates from their eligibility list.
Second.
Stop it.
Motion by LaJia, second by Babone to concur with Chief Semaglia, I've been, sorry, Chief Caniglio. Different chief. Both, both begin with C, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all right.
With Chief Caniglio and allow him to contact the Police and Fire Commission to hire three probationary firefighter paramedics. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J four, please.
Thank you.
Item J four is a communication from City Administrator Siaba Green regarding renewals for the police pension and, uh, I'm sorry, renewals for the police pension fiduciary fund and renewal of the fire pension fiduciary fund.
I move that we approve the policy for fiduciary insurance for the Berwyn Fire Pension Fund with ULLICO in the amount of $8,327 premium and fees.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Carmichael to concur with the City Administrator Siaba Green and approve the fiduciary insurance, insurance policy for the Berwyn Police function, uh, Pension Fund with ULLICO in the amount of $8,327. All those in favor, then call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
LaJia?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Babone?
Aye.
Aaronella?
Aye.
And Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Do I have a second motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the policy for the fiduciary insurance for the Berwyn Fire Pension Fund with ULLICO in the amount of $5,411 premium and fees.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Carmichael to concur with the City Administrator Siaba Green, approve the fiduciary insurance policy for the Berwyn Fire Pension Fund with ULLICO in the amount of $5,411. All those in favor, then call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
LaJia?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Babone?
Aye.
Aaronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. The consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Carmichael to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman Committee meetings, Alderman Lennon?
Call it a chair.
Alderman Roywood?
Call it a chair.
Alderman LaJia?
Call of the chair.
Alderman Faith?
Call it a chair.
Alderman Babone?
I don't have, uh, any meetings coming up, but I do want to let people know that I'm holding a beautification project on Roosevelt Road on Saturday, April 19th, with a group of youth leaders and community members. We'll be meeting on Roosevelt and Highland at 2:00 PM that day. Um, and then I also wanted to let folks know to put it on their calendars, save the date. Uh, we're having another youth opportunity fair. It's our third annual, uh, youth opportunity fair on May 22nd from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Ebenezer Church. This fair, um, includes job opportunities for youth, youth resources, uh, career pathways and other, you know, fun prizes for them. And really the event is put together to celebrate our youth and bring them more opportunities and life chances, uh, within our community. Any young person aged 16 to 24 in the area is welcome.
Alderman Carmichael? I'm sorry, Aaronella. Alderman Aaronella?
Repeat that, Alderman?
Call the chair.
Call of the chair. Alderman Carmichael.
Uh, just wanted to remind people of an event happening, uh, just outside the Eighth Ward this weekend. Uh, a drive-through appeals event with Berwyn Township Assessor Jaclyn Parida on Saturday, April 12th from 9:00 to 1:00 PM at the Joseph Alez Activity Center, uh, formerly the BFW at 1529 Harlem. Uh, you just drive up and stay in your car and they can help you do an appeal. Call the chair and motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Carmichael, second by Aaronella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I have, uh, two more. Did I say that with enthusiasm?